...open this meeting, the active planning board, whatever it is, February 6th. Take a break through in minutes, and then I'll accept the motion. And will we approve of this? As drafted. Is there a second?
Oh, I'm probably mine.
Is there a...
I'm a barb.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? You're happy? All's your favorite. All's your fault. So done, you're late, junior.
All done.
We saved the best for last.
I didn't know you were coming today, but I was gonna... I was looking at your office today, because I was trying to remember what the category of our lakes... I know that on the slideshow, they're in red. Our set of lakes. Well, like, what they're called, Risk. I know that Risk is a risk for...
You're gonna wanna sit over here and...
Elsa has like a statement. Risk for... Most of them are on the show. Not a whole cluster of lakes. A barb shed has got a category or a...
I don't know either. Like, I'd have to ask the head shire. She would know off the top of her head.
No, but I just remember it from the slideshow. I've seen your slideshow like three times.
Uh, I don't know. Yeah, I don't have those pictures this time around.
Oh, it's kind of, yeah. We've seen them.
We like, yeah, we've seen them.
Okay. Ready for rolling? I was got a presentation by the Saco River Corridor Commission. Lamar...
Yes.
Clannan?
Yes.
Lamar Clannan?
Yeah.
Very cool.
Thank you.
And he's gonna present it to us, so...
All right.
Take it away.
I'll take it away. I will... I'm gonna hit the button on this, so you're probably gonna wanna die for cover.
Oh, yeah, all right, sorry.
And I'll probably... I'll introduce myself real quick. So I'm Lamar Clannan. I am Director of the Maine Nemo Program, which is non-point education for municipal officials. So I go around talking to planning boards and selectmen all around the state for the last 12 years about water quality and how development affects water quality. So, right now, I'm working with the Saco River Corridor Commission on a grant from the Maine Outdoor Heritage Fund to protect the drinking water and recreational resources of the Saco River. And so you guys are up here, kind of perched on the edge of the watershed. We're part of your stuffed jeans to the little Osiphe and the Saco, and part of it goes to the Salmon Falls. And I've worked on a lot of work with the Salmon Falls watershed collaboration also. So I've been in the region quite a bit. But I'm here again tonight to talk to you guys about the links between development and water quality, and also to talk a lot about low-impact development, which is an alternative we can use to really help reduce the amount of pollutants that are getting into our water. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead. Does anybody mind if I turn the lights off?
Yes.
There we go. Oh, and I've also, underneath all your packets, I stuck an evaluation form. So if you could... The front is just kind of general, do you like the presentation, is it appropriate? The backside is more trying to gauge your... Who you think is responsible for keeping our water clean? Is it the state? Is it the EPA? Is it the local towns? Is it the Saco River Corridor Commission? If you could just fill that in when you're done, I'd really appreciate it. And also, any... You guys, I did this present... Well, actually, you guys are kind of getting a special bit of the presentation. It's a little bit different than what I did in Dayton on Monday. But these are the first few towns I'm gonna be hitting, all 20 towns along the Saco River. So if you guys have any input on this stuff, ways I can make it better for the people that come after you, I really appreciate it. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna jump right in. A lot of people don't know what non-point source pollution is, so I usually start there. What it means is, when it rains, pollution happens. And it comes, you know, rain falling on that farm field. You're gonna see mud and manure coming off of that site. Rain that falls on that subdivision of the foreground, there's gonna be more water coming off that site because there's rooftops and driveways and sidewalks. And there's also gonna be different types of pollution. There's gonna be lawn fertilizers and dog poop from the yard, and there's gonna be drips and drops of gas from the driveways. But all landscapes contribute to the types of pollutants that come off when it rains. So it's one of these things where this is the number-one source of pollution in Maine's streams, and also streams nationwide. And so we can't just point to the one person that's doing it, because it's all of us making a contribution, which is why really changing the way we develop our landscape is gonna be the way that we tackle those problems successfully. So when it rains on a natural landscape, most of the water soaks into the ground. You know, a bunch of it gets caught up in the vegetation and evaporates off, and some of that water moves across the surface of the land and then dumps into our streams, our lakes, our bays. And when we start seeing development... This is a picture of Ellsworth here. I like to pick on them for some reason. But we get those hardened surfaces, those rooftops, those driveways, sidewalks, and we get a much bigger gush of water that moves across the landscape. It picks up our urban residue, and then it dumps into our streams, our lakes, our bays. That bigger gush of water has been wreaking havoc on our urban infrastructure. And lately, rainfall's been changing here in the Northeast. They're getting more intense. So we're getting like heavier rainfall's happening in a shorter time period. And it rips this stuff apart. And this is really expensive to fix, especially when it's happening year after year after year. And then those types of pollutants that come off the landscape, you know, they matter. So when we talk about bacteria getting in the water, we're talking about failing septic systems contributing bacteria. We're talking about farm, like the cow poop out of the farm fields. We're talking about dog poop in your front yard. These are all sources of bacteria. When that stuff gets into the water and people get exposed to it, they get sick. So they'll get eye infections, ear infections. They'll get the summer flu, which is not really the summer flu if they've got... You know, they drink some water with poop in it, and it's making them sick. Temperature is a weird thing to think about as a pollutant, but if you think about the parking lot on the Fourth of July, you're not gonna take your shoes off and walk across it. It's gonna be very hot. So when a thunder shower opens up on that parking lot, that temperature spikes, and then it runs off that parking lot and it goes into a road ditch and then dumps into a stream somewhere. And it raises the temperature in that stream. So the fish that evolve in Maine's cold-water streams, they do not like temperature changes like that. And hot water doesn't hold oxygen nearly as well as cold water does, so they can actually smother if there's not enough oxygen in that water. Then there's nutrients, those nitric... That nitrogen and phosphorus, you put it on the ground, fertilizer, it makes plants grow. You put it in the water, it makes plants grow. So one of the things that we're worried about is, when it gets into our water, it causes these nuisance algae blooms, which they don't look good. And then when you've got algae in your lakes, it reduces the property values around the lake. And then when that algae dies, it sinks to the bottom of the lake, and as it decomposes, it uses up the oxygen in the bottom of the lake. So again, you're getting fish that can't breathe in that lower segment of your water column. And China Lake is a really tragic example of where this has happened. In 1974, there was a big agricultural dump of nutrients into the lake that started an algae bloom. And so there was a big algae bloom, all the algae died. It used up all the oxygen in the bottom of the lake. And once that oxygen is gone, those nutrients can be re-released back into the water column and start another algae bloom. So since 1974, China Lake's had an algae bloom every year that they can't get rid of. They've been fighting it for years, trying to get it to stop, to break that cycle. The petroleum derivatives, those little drips and drops of gas that come off everybody's car. You know, when you go to the grocery store, look in the middle of every parking spot, and you'll see just how much everybody's car leaks. You know, they don't just leak when they park, they can throw on roads too. So when it rains, that stuff gets washed into our waterways, and that causes cancer. Causes cancer in people, it causes cancer in fish. Pesticides and herbicides are designed to kill stuff, so we don't wanna drink it. But a lot of these things are really powerful substances in tiny, tiny little amounts. So a lot of these things are operating off of hormone mimickers. And so worldwide, sperm counts are on a decrease because we've been spreading so much of these estrogen mimickers out there in the environment. There are actually populations of alligators in Florida who've been exposed to so many of these that their sex organs are so undersized, they can't successfully reproduce anymore. You know, that's a big deal. So making sure that our highway, our road crews are using this stuff appropriately is really important. Chlorides, you know, we spread sand and salt all over the roads, and as long as, you know, the public expects to be able to drive, you know, at highway speeds the day after the storm and get to work at 8 o'clock in the morning, we're gonna continue to do that. Nothing gets rid of chlorides except for flushing it through the system. So anytime we can reduce the amount of chloride safely that we're using, that's an important thing to do. Heavy metals here in Maine, one of the big ones we're worried about is mercury. And that stuff is coming from coal-fired power plants in the Midwest, where they burn the coal, and the mercury goes up into the atmosphere, and it comes to Maine and it spreads across the landscape. And that's, you know, it's... That's not a really big deal, because it's very dilute. But when it rains, it washes into the water, and from there, it can bioaccumulate. So you get little fish that, you know, get a little bit, and bigger fish get more as they eat the little fish. And those longer-lived carnivorous fish species are building up toxic amounts of metals in their bodies. I think people still don't know the picture now. I cut out the family photos. This is a big deal to me, because there's a lot of people in Maine who love to eat the fish that they catch in Maine. I love to catch striped bass. I used to have a picture of my husband pulling a big striped bass out of the Kennebec River. This is, you know, and a striped bass to be a keeper has to be like this big. So the year after we took that photo, those fish in Maine were listed as having so much mercury in them that women of children married age and children should not be eating those fish at all. And men should eat no more than one fish meal per month, which is about the size of a deck of cards. You know, and as someone who grew up subsistence fishing, that's a huge blow. And I know there's a lot of Mainers that use that as a protein source, especially during rough economic times. So, you know... So for me, I've got a six-year-old daughter that's begging to eat the fish, and I have to keep telling her, "No, no, no. I'm gonna go to work, and I'm gonna get all these people on board. We're gonna clean up the fish, and then you'll be able to eat them." And then you might have noticed they skip sediment, because that's my favorite non-point source pollutant. Because sediment... Dirt particles are really sticky. And so when dirt particles are moving into our water, all this other stuff is sticking to it. And I can't train my eyes to see a phosphorus molecule on the ground or to see a mercury molecule on the ground. But I can train my eyes to see erosion and sedimentation happening, and I can work to stop that from happening. And when I can stop the dirt from getting in the water, I stop a lot of this other stuff from getting in there at the same time. So if development is causing our problems, is development really a problem? Especially in Maine, where most of us live in small towns. So this is a picture of my small town. I live in Litchfield, which is kind of between Lewis and Auburn and Augusta. And it's definitely within community, just about 45 minutes away from Portland. You know, and there's not much going on there except for, you know, the fact that I live there, which makes it great. But we've got some nice lakes going on in town. But the people in my town were considered a rural agricultural community, and it was hard for me to, you know, understand whether we had a growth problem or not. So taking a look at some of the growth that's happened in my town. In 1879, we had 370 houses. In 100 years, that number of houses had just about doubled. And then in 20 years, the number of houses in my town had doubled again. You know, that's faster than bacteria growth. The doubling time went from 100 years down to 20 years, which is crazy. If you see the dots on that map, you'll notice that last 20 years' worth of growth was really around the lakes. There was a lot, a huge boom in turning those camps into year-round homes and putting a lot more of them in. And that was just up through 1990. I don't even have the houses since then on there. So the people who've been living in my town for 20 years, they can't feel that kind of growth happening. So unless you're a hunter who's been shooting deer in this town forever, you know, you're seeing these houses spring up, or a snowmobiler who's having, you know, some of those trails cut off by these new houses, you just can't feel that kind of thing happening in our town. But it's happening, and it's happening in small towns all over Maine. So one of the ways we decided to deal with growth in my town was we said, okay, to protect our rural agricultural values is we're gonna have minimum lot sizes. And so what that means is, we have two-acre minimum lot size in our rural residential areas. And so what we're seeing is those two-acre lots have popped up all over town now. And, you know, for a rural agricultural community, two acres doesn't work. You can't ride a half course on two acres and have any fun at all. You can't ride a snowmobile, you can't cross-country ski, you can't make a living off of growing strawberries. You know, none of these things work on a two-acre lot. And a two-acre lot has a direct impact on the water quality. When you get a two-acre lot with your average house, if you include the road frontage and the setback, about 10% of that area is a hardened surface, and water doesn't soak into it anymore. So what that means is, water's running off those rooftops, down the driveway, into the road ditch, and ends up in a stream somewhere. And so this is, you can see the quality of the water that's coming out of those road ditches. And this is not, you know, an exceptionally, you know, developed area. This is, you know, that's two-acre house lots going on right there. These are pictures from the Center for Watershed Protection, and this holds true not just in Maine, but nationwide. When you have a watershed that's less than 5% hardened areas, you're gonna have a pretty healthy stream. It's gonna be pretty wide and pretty shallow. And so what that means is, anytime it rains and that thing floods, it's just gotta... That water's gotta get up on the flood plain, it slows down as it moves through the trees and the bushes. And as that water slows down, it drops its sediments on the bank. Remember, those dirt particles are sticky, so as all that sediment gets dropped up on the bank, all the... Those other pollutants stuck to it are getting dropped up on land again, which means it's cleaning the water. And then the water moves through the soil, it cleans it, moves through the soil, and it feeds that stream during low-flowing periods, and that's great. That's a very healthy system. By the time you get to that two-acre lot scenario in your watershed, you're 8% to 10% impervious, there's a bigger gush of water that's moving through that stream, and so it's starting to erode, it's starting to downcut, which means it's getting deeper, which means it has to have a bigger flood event. It has to rain a lot harder for that water to get back up on that flood plain and slow down. And if it can't do that, as this water slows down in the stream, it's just gonna dump all those sediments in the stream bed. And fish like to lay their eggs in like loose little cobbles. You know, they tuck their eggs in there, and the water washes over, and they keep them clean and aerated. So if all that sediment can't get out of the system, it's gonna smother those eggs down there. You can also see this system is starting to erode. We've got... You can see roots exposed in that tree over there on the right. You know, that's like a 10- or 15-year-old tree that's coming down. So unless this system stabilizes for 10 or 15 years, that tree is not going to be replaced. And then by the time we see watersheds that are 20% impervious area, we're starting to see this kind of thing happening. There's so much water gushing through the system that that culvert that used to be sitting on that stream bed, now like six feet of material have eroded out from underneath it. It's eroded six feet back on this bank, it's eroded six feet back on the other bank, and all of that material's just getting dumped down into the lake down below. So what does that do to our lakes down below? These are pictures from an experiment that was done in Canada, where they wanted to see just how much phosphorus it took to get one of those algae blooms going. So what they did is, they took a healthy lake, and they cut it in half with a membrane, and then they just started sprinkling phosphorus on one side to see how much did it take. And so the natural state of this lake was less than 10 parts-per-billion phosphorus. And then it only took 20 parts-per-billion to get this thing to flip over into one of those reoccurring algae blooms. And just like people aren't built to feel growth happening in a 20-year period, we're not really built to understand a part-per-billion. But just to kind of put that into perspective, think about China. Not China, Maine, where the... But China, China, where they've got a billion people. If you took 10 of your friends and sent them to China, that's 10 parts-per-billion. So if you went to China, would you be able to find your friends? No. No. You'd have to be like, yeah, psychic and incredibly lucky to find your friend in China. So now you take 20 of your friends and send them to China. Would you be able to find your friends if you sent 20 friends to China? No, you're not gonna be able to find them either. But algae can find their friends at that concentration. So that's kind of the concentration difference we're talking about, that it takes to flip a lake over. It doesn't take much. And this is a big deal, because you guys are sitting up here, kind of perched, with all these beautiful lakes around you, and your water drains two directions. It drains into the Salmon Falls River, where 40,000 people get their drinking water. And then it drains into the little Osiphe, which goes into the Saco, where 100,000 people get their drinking water. So it's kind of a big deal. You're up here, and the development that you do up here definitely is gonna affect the water quality down below. And the way we develop, the way we've been asking people to develop for years is we've been pushing water off our sites. We design our parking lots to drain. You can see this one's draining out there down back. You know, and a lot of times, it just runs down a grate. And if you... If you ask people, like, if you're standing there, and you point to it... If you ask people about strong water, they don't really think about it. They don't even know what strong water is. But if you're standing in this parking lot, and you say, "This water, where does it go?" People in their heads, if they see it go down a grate, they think it goes into a pipe and it gets shipped off to a factory somewhere where we take out the bad stuff. And I've heard real people with educations and jobs actually saying, "They must take out the bad stuff and make styrofoam with it." You know, people think that. And so when people throw bagged-up dog poo, or dump their motor oil, or rake their leaves from their lawn and stuff them down those grates, they think they're making styrofoam somewhere. They don't put it together that, "No, there's a five-foot pipe, and it comes into that stream right there." They just don't know that that's what's happening. And a lot of our development, this is what it does. It just, you know, it runs off the parking lot right into a stream. If we do have a development that's been big enough to require treatment, the kind of treatment we require is something like this. Instead of running directly into the stream, it runs to... We make a pond, and we let it sit in that pond. And then, so what this is, is the water runs in here, it sits, and as the water builds up to a certain level, there's a hole in that outlet pipe, and it goes out the hole. And so we're hoping that by it's sitting there long enough, that those sediments and the pollutants kind of drop out to the bottom and clean water kind of camps off the top. But the problem is, is that it doesn't really work very well. So you can see the quality of the water that's sitting in there is pretty yucky. And this is a nice one. This is a good-looking detention pond. You know, it's got grass slopes, it's got a nice gravel emergency outlet overflow. And it's, you know, but we feel the need to put fences around it, because that's yucky water, and we don't want our toddlers getting in there and messing around in it. So this is how we've been asking developers to do it for years, is get the water off-site. If we're gonna treat it, put it into a pond. So there's new ways of doing things. And low-impact development techniques are really starting to come to the forefront, all over the nation and here in Maine. And the difference is, instead of treating water like something that needs to be disposed of, getting it off the site, we wanna soak it into the ground as close to where that raindrop fell as possible. So using it as a resource on-site. So we're starting to see more things that look like this. So this parking lot, it drains into here, and it just soaks into the ground. You know, and that water, as it moves through... This is a little rain garden or a bio-infiltration area. There's different names for it. But as the water moves through that soil, it gets cleaned out, because that soil takes all the other soil particles out of it, so they stay in there. The vegetation helps eat up those nutrients, that nitrogen and the phosphorus is used up by the plants. And the sunlight hits the surface of that soil, so it kills a lot of the bacteria. And there's microbes that eat up those petroleum drips and drops that are coming off all the cars in this parking lot. So this is a much better way of doing things. This is actually treating that water, as opposed to just holding on to it and then dumping it into a stream somewhere. So we're seeing, instead of parking lots that shed water 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and then hold up cars, you know, while they're waiting for the train, we're starting to see parking facilities like this, that actually soak in water 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and still are engineered to have the structural integrity to hold the vehicles. Instead of seeing rooftops that look like this, we're starting to see rooftops that look like this. This is a retrofit of a historical building in Brockland. You know, if Brockland can do it, why can't anybody? Instead of buildings that look like this, we're seeing buildings that look like this. You know, in Paris, they're seeing buildings that look like this. Which is phenomenally beautiful. You know, this is gorgeous, and it's soaking up rainwater, and it's cleaning the air, and people love to look at it. And there's no way you can put graffiti on it. You know, so if you've got a graffiti problem in town, this might be the solution. And then in some places, instead of cities like this, we're seeing cities that look like this. This is Stuttgart, Germany. You know, there's like 2 million people that live there, and they've got regulations to say, "If you've got a roof of a certain size, you gotta put a green roof on it." So one of the things this is doing, not only is it soaking up almost every raindrop that falls on top of it and evaporating it back into the atmosphere, but it's insulating the building, keeps it a lot cooler in the summertime. It's providing wildlife habitat. It's prolonging the rooftop, because the sunlight doesn't hit that rooftop, that roof membrane anymore, so it doesn't age as quickly. So these roofs will actually last... Instead of a 20-year roof, you'll get a 60-year roof. Birds, butterflies, love it. It's cleaning the air. And people who look out the window and see this kind of stuff are measurably happier than people who look out the window and, you know, see that kind of thing. I don't know how they measure that, but, you know, I'm happier looking at it. So this stuff is not new. It's been around in a lot of places for a long time, and it's really starting to come to Maine. And so I'm spreading the word. So I wanted to walk you guys just through some of the forest pavement stuff. So this is, you know, being able to hold up our park... Pull up our cars, it's still soaking water. So when they make regular asphalt, they take sand, and they take gravel, and they take tar, and they mix it all together, and they smoosh it out. And you see the parking lot in the back, that's regular parking. So when you do the porous parking, you leave out the sand. So you mix your gravel and your tar, and you smoosh it out, and you get something that looks like a Big Rice Krispie treat. You know, that... Those raindrops can move through this surface, and then down below, you have very deep sand and gravel layers. So the water can sit, it moves through that sand, it gets clean, it sits in that gravel layer until it can either soak into the native soils down below, or sometimes they have under-drained pipes. So it gets clean as it moves through the system, and then it gets piped out to a stream somewhere. Same thing, you can do the same thing with concrete. Leave out the fines, water will soak right through it. This is another alternative. This is down in Kittery. This is a parking lot that has a plastic web underneath it that holds all that gravel in place. So this is in a commercial area, they plow it on a regular basis. And now the water runs off the regular parking lot into this stuff. It soaks right through the gravel and then through the soil, because the estuary is just on the other side of that road bushes right there. So that water's getting cleaned before it goes into the estuaries, and just dumping all the pollutants right into the estuary. And these are interlocking pavers. You know, it's kind of the same thing. They've got the cracks if the water moves through. And basically, all of these work by having that gravel layer underneath, so the water can sit in those porous spaces until it can soak in something down below. And this is kind of cool, because instead of having a parking lot where you need a detention basin off-site to treat the water, this is treating the water on the same real estate that the parking lot. You know, it's right underneath your parking lot, so you don't need extra space to put this stuff in. And this stuff holds up really well in the wintertime. This is a regular sidewalk. If you turn 90 degrees, this is someone who put in a... This is recycled brick sitting in a gravel layer just on the other side of the house. You can see the city sidewalk, every time that snow melts, it refreezes on the sidewalk, whereas this shoveled walkway here, nothing can refreeze onto it. If it's warm enough to melt, it's warm enough to drip right through into that gravel layer. It doesn't refreeze on this surface. And that's what we're finding for the porous parking lot, the porous asphalt. It stays much cleaner in the wintertime. You don't get that refreeze, you don't get the black ice on it. You can use a lot less sand and salt on those than you do on a regular parking lot. So if we're trying to reduce chlorides in our stream systems, that's one of the things you can use, because you put a lot less chloride out there in the environment to make it safe. And then roof water is typically very clean, and so getting it right in the ground is a great idea. So this is a drip line trench underneath a roof that doesn't have a gutter on it. So the water, you know, there's like a foot of gravel right there, so it goes in and soaks through the ground. Instead of seeing downspouts, like hitting the driveway, running down the driveway into a road ditch, we're start... You know, we're hoping we see, at least see them pointed on a grass, so it can soak in a little bit. Grass has really dense roots, and water will actually flow over the top of it, so it's not the best. It'd be better if you could give it some sort of dry well, a place to soak in. That's better. And these things can be really beautiful. They can be absolute amenities in our community. You know, I think about that chocolate milk, you know, and the cage they put around it to keep the toddlers out. You know, there's no way I would let my daughter play in that water. But whereas if I had to try to drag her past this thing while the water was flowing, you know, I would definitely let her play in that, and I would have a hard time getting her past that without letting her play in it. You know, and there's... Oh, and there's another... And so these can work right downtown, too. You know, you could be in the middle of some pretty dense development, and this stuff still functions, and can be absolutely beautiful. Here's that. These are Portland planters, so it's kind of the same thing, except it's an elevated gravel bed that the rooftops are draining into, you get your planters, and they can also act as benches along the side, so right downtown. Let's see, then rain gardens or bio-retention areas, these things, they can be shaped a lot of different ways, and they can be molded to... They can be molded to fit a lot of different situations. So what these are, these are put in the low spots on the landscape, so water's gonna flow into them, and they're filled with very fluffy soils. And the DEP is actually got a standard mix that they can recommend these days that some places mix up and keep mixed up for the bio-retention units. But so you plant drought-tolerant vegetation in there, because the water's gonna go in, and it's gonna sit in that fluffy soil for a while, and then it's gonna soak into the ground, so it's gonna be dry most of the time. And so as the water moves through, it gets... And so as the water moves through, it gets cleaned moving through that soil filter. And they can be designed to have like under-drained pipes. So if you're worried about water backing up and public safety issues, you can put pipes underneath them. If you're in an area next to a gas station and you don't want anything to soak in groundwater, you can line them with impermeable liners. And this is cool because everything coming off that gas station is still gonna get filtered through the soil filter before it goes out the outlet pipe. And if there ever is an incident where we've got a gas leak, you can cap that thing and you can capture it right there. It's all contained. So these fit a lot of different situations. Here's some being used in a commercial area. You can see the emergency overflow, just in case. This is a condominium complex where they've got the rooftops are draining and it's, so there's pipes underneath those sidewalks that dump right into those rain gardens in the middle of the courtyard. These are, you know, a couple used in parking lots. And, you know, they can be fancy schmancy with the gravel and the beautiful plants. Or they can be bark mulch and candy wrappers. But the thing is, is like, you know, both of these things, it's the soil that's doing a lot of the treatment on these. So both of these systems are working to clean the water before it soaks into the ground. The ones with the actual vegetation in it will do a better job than would be the nitrogen, the phosphorus than the bark mulch candy wrapper scenario. But both are working. This is one in a residential neighborhood. So the water runs off the roof, down the driveway, into the gutter and then right back out of the property, which is awesome. You know, and aside from a new bathroom or a new kitchen, landscaping is the next best thing you can do to improve your property values. So this is beautiful and it's improving property values and it's making the water cleaner all at the same time. And I like this one a lot. Not because it's the prettiest one out there by any stretch of the imagination, but you can really see how it's designed. And these plants were just put into it, so, you know, next year they'll be all beautiful and look a lot better. But this is squeezed into one of those last-ditch places where you'd never be able to catch that parking lot runoff before it hits the lake unless you use something like this. And they can be squeezed into those hotspots to really catch where you're getting concentrated stuff coming off. And that can be taken down to the single-tree level. You know, here's one on the corner. So things used to just run down that manhole. And this has been modified to actually go through the tree well first. And if the tree well, if it's such a big rain event that that backs up, then it'll still go down the manhole. But, you know, it's got a chance to soak into the ground right there first. So UNH Stormwater Center has been testing a lot of this stuff. You know, because for years, we've been telling people to do the retention basins. We're finding out they don't work. So we wanted to make sure that we were telling them to do something that did work, not just something else that didn't work. So I wanted to share some of the data real quickly with you. So this is a retention pond similar to, this is the stuff we've been asking developers to do for the last 10, 20, 30, 40, probably 50 years. You know, this is what we've been asking them to do. And it costs, this one costs $13,000 to treat one acre of parking lot runoff. And so I'm gonna get up here and point for just a second. This is the removal data they got from UNH. And so we're looking at the sediment removal, petroleum, nitrogen, zinc, and phosphorus removal. And then it's summer, winter, and then the annual average. And so this red bar, this is 80% when we, when we're looking at removal. We want to see at least 80% of the sediment's being removed. So you can see this system, it looked like it was kind of doing okay. It wasn't doing too bad until you look at a year-by-year breakdown of how it was actually performing. And the first year, it did great. It was hitting that 80%. Second year, it was at 50%. The third year, it was actually putting out more pollutants than it was taking in. And so we're not sure if it had stuff stored up from year one and year two and then it was like pushing that stuff on through. Or if you look at the picture, there's some erosion going on. So we're not sure why, but it wasn't good. By the third year, this thing's on the landscape, it was already failing. It was already worse than nothing. They've been testing the porous asphalt parking lot that they built up there. And what they found out, they were really surprised with the pollutant removal that they were getting from that. They were expecting the sediments to be taken up in it because underneath that porous asphalt, you know, there's sands and gravel layers. And so they were expecting everything to kind of get caught up in that. But they were amazed they were getting 100% of the hydrocarbons removed from it. They're doing a great job on the metals. They're doing a good job on nitrogen, which like we're wondering, or, um, wondering why there's nitrogen removal because usually you need a vegetative component to get that stuff out of there. But this is taking out some of the nutrients as well. So they were blown away with how well that was performing. And this stuff isn't cheap. And it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples on this stuff because if you've got a porous asphalt parking lot, you've got a lot deeper sand and gravel layers down below it. If you've got a regular parking lot and you've got curb and gutter and catch basin and underground pipe and then a detention basin somewhere to treat the runoff. So it's kind of hard to do a comparison of the price tag between those two things. But in 2008, it was $2.80 a square foot for porous asphalt versus $2.25 a square foot for just regular asphalt. And that was, that's just the asphalt. It doesn't, that's not all the other stuff that goes along with it in a parking lot. Bio-retention systems, those rain gardens. These, it costs about $18,000 to build one big enough to treat an acre of parking lot runoff. But we're seeing that the removal rates on the pollutants are consistent and they work. So it's much better to spend $18,000 for something that works than $13,000 on something that's gonna fail after three years. And then one of the things that they designed up there is a subsurface gravel wetland. And what this is, it's kind of like, the rain gardens, they're designed to dry out. This thing is designed to stay wet. But it doesn't stay wet above ground. It stays wet in a submerged gravel layer. So you'll see, this has got, there's an outlet pipe that's elevated. So the water level stays right here in this gravel layer. So water comes in, it flows down through the soils and it sits in this gravel until more water comes in and that water in the gravel layer gets pushed through. So the stuff sitting down here, it stays anaerobic. It's very low oxygen in there, which means different kinds of chemistry happens down there. And what they saw, this is the best thing for pollutant removal that we've seen out there today. So this is the kind of removal you can get from some of this stuff. It's really phenomenal. This is $22,000 to design one that will treat an acre's worth of parking lot runoff. Just to kind of keep it all in perspective.
And how long did it last?
It's still working. They don't know.
And it hasn't gotten worse like, not, certainly as bad as the catch basin, but...
This is, this is a six-year, or actually, this is a seven-year, this is seven years of data average. Yeah. And it's continuing. They put out a bi-annual report. They did one last year, so they should be doing another one next year.
Does it need maintenance?
What's that?
Does it need maintenance?
Um, everything needs maintenance. But one of the things that they're doing there is because the detention basins that we've been asking people to put out, they don't get maintained. So what they're trying to do is not maintain these and see how they perform in those conditions. So there's, you know, if a paper cup is blocking an outlet or something, they'll go pluck it out of there so, you know, things aren't backing up. But they're not getting in there and doing regular maintenance on these. Okay, so we're starting to see a lot of this stuff pop up and a lot of them are happening in Maine. There's a rain garden going in Back Cove in Portland. That's kind of back behind the Hanford over there. There's some infiltration areas in parking lots over by the Main Mall. There's Ocean Avenue Elementary has got a big infiltration area. And this is cool because with federal projects, federal dollars cannot be used for landscaping, but they can be used for stormwater treatment. So when you're getting both at the same time, you know, shazam. I never say that. I don't know why I just said shazam. Yeah, so this is an interlocking grass paver. So there's like bricks in there that have grass growing through tops. So this is, this is good enough. You can have fire trucks drive on this stuff. It can be plowed and it still soaks in water. And then this is the busiest roadway in Maine. This is Main Mall Road. And the DOT put in a stretch of porous pavement in here that's been operating. Boy, I think it's been in for four or five years at this point. And it's performing well above, you know, what they thought it would do. This is great. So when you're driving around the Main Mall in the rain and there's like rain splashing up all over and you get to this one stretch road, there's no more overspray, so people's cars aren't throwing water up in your windshield anymore. It's quieter than regular pavement because all those pores help eat up the sound. And it's, yeah, it's performing just perfectly. And then this is like a tree, this is, yeah, this is kind of embarrassing. This is a tree box filter that went up kind of by the Main Mall also. But the person who owns the mall, the strip mall here, they were worried that a tree would block visibility. And so as a compromise, they were like, "Okay, we'll stick a bunch of grass in it." Which looks silly, but the thing is, is this thing is still working for water quality treatment. So you can, you can do that if that's what you feel like you need to do. It still works. This is a rain garden in front of the Portland Water District. So you can see Sbagel Lake just kind of like right across the street over there. So this is cleaning that water before it goes in the drinking water source for Portland. This is the Hanford and it got, I call it the fancy Hanford because they've got the green roof on top. This is cool. This is a box system. So they, you know, put all these boxes up there. So that means if they get a weed infestation, they can just pull a box. You know, so these are, these are really easy to swap in and out. You know, if they decide they want to go with a different color scheme, they can just swap out the boxes. This is porous concrete being poured in York 2007. There's one of those downspout, one of those boxes. You know, so it's got your planter grass and the water comes off the roof and it soaks into that box. This is the green roof on the middle school in Ellsworth. So this school, they wanted to expand the school, but there was no room to expand the stormwater treatment on-site. So they were gonna have to move the school out of town. And instead of doing that, they said, "Well, we want the kids to have access to the playgrounds. We want kids to be able to walk to school." So they decided to put a green roof on the top to deal with that water. And they've got a porous asphalt parking lot out front. And I talked to the maintenance guy last spring and he loves both of them. And that's important. You talk to the guy who's doing the maintenance on it, he loves it. This is the lakes, the new lake center in Belgrade. And so they've got one of those interlocking paver parking lots. That's where everybody parks. And then round back, they've got, so they've got this big grassed area. And underneath that is that black plastic stuff. That's a chunk of it by Pete's feet right there. So that's all underneath the grass, so it keeps it from getting compacted because every, one day a week, they have their farmer's market here. So everybody drives their cars out, they set up their tents. The community walks all over it. They drive back out, pack up their stuff and go. And that keeps the grass from getting compacted and it keeps the water soaking in. And just in case, you know, this was over-engineered. It's on a very slight slope, which even if you're standing on it, you can't tell. But it all slopes kind of back by that tree. And you can see the drain kind of in the grass. So if water ever did run across this thing, it would eventually go into that drain and then there's a rain garden back down behind there. So we flowed into the rain garden.
How far below the grass or the surface is that plastic?
Not very, not very far at all. It's, it's almost like you're driving on the surface of that.
And is that membrane on gravel there or some kind of porous something hard? Or just the normal?
No, there's, I'm not sure exactly what the substrate is under it. I'm sure there's something, I'm not sure if it's all soil or if they put some sort of sand or gravel under there. If you're doing sand or gravel, then you're gonna need a really long-rooted drought-tolerant grass because it's gonna be, have to be able to get through that to access the groundwater. So, you know, I don't know what the cross-section looks like there. But I do have a cross-section coming up of something a little bit different, but similar. And this, this stuff works on single-family house lots, which is so important in Maine because if you look at my town of Lynchfield, we've got a lot of growth going on, but none of it is, we have no big, we barely got a gas station in town. You know, so all of our growth is single-family house lots. And if we're not dealing with some of the rain coming off of the single-family house lots, we're missing the majority of development in Maine. So this is a, this was a group that went around to a bunch of camps around the lake in Unity. And they got camp owners to put in rain gardens and soak in water before it all went down and drained into the lake. You know, this stuff can be really beautiful. You know, it's, it's not like it's ugly. This is actually just gorgeous stuff that helps protect, you know, our water. These are infiltration steps that lead down the lakes. So the water, so instead of having, you know, a little dirt path that water gushes down and carries stuff down the lake, these are, you soak it right in. And there, this, you can see the cross-section over there on the right-hand side. So this was a compacted dirt parking spot. And what they did is they took that dirt out and they mixed some of it with gravel and they put it in there. And that's a really long-rooted drought-tolerant grass. So that way, that gravel doesn't compact, it holds up the car. They can keep it mowed and it soaks in the water. Which is a great, you know, that's a great option for people who live around lakes and want, you know, we want to have our places to park. We want to be able to mow it. We want it to look pretty and we don't want stuff running off, you know, causing algae blooms and decreasing our property values. This is that same house. These are recycled bricks, put in a gravel layer. So this is that, this is the same sidewalk that I showed you the winter picture of a little while ago. And these are all made out of recycled bricks. The guy who did this, he said the most expensive part of this was the beer and pizza to get his friends to come over and help him put it in. So I wanted to talk just real quickly about some projects where this stuff can be used to save developers money. And that's, you know, so it's, there's so many ways that this stuff is positive. I'm trying to get the word out there. So this is a subdivision that went in and instead of putting detention basins to treat the road runoff, they went and put rain gardens in front of every house. So by doing that, instead of putting it, so they saved $420,000 by not putting in those detention basins. And then because they didn't need the detention basins, they had two extra house lots. They could sell for another $90,000. So this developer saved more than half a million dollars on this development, which is huge. That's a huge bump to developers. City of Seattle in their suburbs, you know, instead of having sidewalk and curb and gutter and a pipe underground that takes the water off the street, they, they found out that if they put in rain gardens in front of every house, narrow up the street and only have sidewalk on one side of the street, it's 25% cheaper to do it that way. And they're getting water quality treatment. All that water is staying here on-site instead of running off into their salmon-bearing streams. Now on the West Coast, salmon only swim upstream once. I was, I'm from Alaska, so I'm used to, salmon come up and then they spawn and they die. So there's dead fish all over the place. I was blown away when I came to Maine and realized that Atlantic salmon, they swim up, they do their thing and then they go back to the ocean and come back and do it again next year. It was like, blew my mind. Boulder Hills, New Hampshire. So this was a, this was a plan that came in front of the planning board, right up to the planning board who learned about low-impact development. And the developers are like, "What do you think?" And they said, "Well, let's, let's work on this. Can we get rid of those stormwater ponds? And instead of using regular pavement, try putting some of that porous pavement in there." So this is what it looks like now that it's been built. And they saved $50,000 by going that way because they didn't have to do the curb, the gutter, the underground pipe and the stormwater treatment basins back behind everybody's houses. This is, this is the old lightbulb factory that's just off, I think it's Exit 3 in New Hampshire. So it used to be an old lightbulb factory. And so they've been trying to figure out how to redevelop it. They've got an urban impaired stream back behind this thing. And so they're like, "In, so when you've got an urban impaired stream, you can't contribute to the impairment of that stream. How do we do it?" So they worked with the Stormwater Center in Durham and said, "What can we do?" So what they did is they soaked in some of the rooftop from some of these big box stores. They had regular pavement right in front of the building because this developer had never worked with the porous stuff. So put the porous stuff on the outskirts just in case anything goes wrong. Put in one of those fancy gravel wetlands to do a final polish. So all of this stuff drains under the parking lots to a pipe to the gravel wetland and then off to the stream. So that gravel wetland puts the final polish on that water. Here's some pictures of it as before and during development. And then this is what it looks like. Oh yeah, these are still one box store getting ready to go in. But they saved $930,000 by going this route as opposed to traditional stormwater treatment. You know, that's, they saved almost a million dollars on this project, which is phenomenal. And, uh, one of the things is, the developer realized that he should've got the porous pavement all the way up to the front of the building there. Because you can see, on a rainy day, it actually slopes a little bit towards the building and they get big pools of water right in front of the doors. Where if it had been porous asphalt all the way up, that would be nice and dry. So live and learn, next time.
Um...
Yes?
During the winter, porous asphalt, are there any freeze issues?
The thing is, is these things are, does, they're, they're built with very big sanding gravel layers underneath them, so they break that hydraulic connectivity. So you don't get the freeze thought, heating thing going on. There's actually almost a chimney effect, because you get the, the ground temperature is warm enough that you get warm air kinda coming up out of there and melting that stuff and dripping it inside. So no, so they're actually thinking, because we haven't really been studying them like that for that long, they think these are gonna last much longer than typical parking lots. And the, the first porous parking lot that I know of is in Walden Pond. It was put in in nineteen seventy-seven. It's had zero maintenance and it's still functioning perfectly.
Uh, asphalt, uh, porous?
Porous asphalt, yeah. Yep, porous asphalt. Since nineteen seventy-seven, yeah, long time, no, zero maintenance. So to promote this stuff, York was one of the, uh, first places I know in Maine that actually put it into ordinance. And I don't expect you to read this whole thing, but this is their ordinance. And it says, "If you're gonna develop in town, we want you to think about low-impact development techniques. If you're not gonna use them, tell us why." And this was a really great baby step for the planning board and for developers and for engineers to all learn about it together. So they're not saying we have, you have to do it, but we want you to look at it. Um, and since then, so they've been getting, so you saw that York, um, the York hospitals got porous concrete sidewalks. You know, and I think this is put in that, those went in in two thousand and seven. So this is one of the things that towns can do to kind of help push this stuff along and kind of bring up everybody's education level, um, without putting undue requirements on people. And if you want, I can, I can send you this language. Um, another thing you can do, I have this dream. Um, University of Maine Cooperative Extension has put together this adding a garden, uh, rain garden to your landscape. So this is designed, or, uh, this, this brochure will teach you how to build rain gardens here in Maine. It'll tell you where to put them, how to size them, what plans to put in them, if it's in the shade, if it's in the sun. Um, which is a really phenomenal thing. So in my town of Lynchfield, where the only type of development we're seeing is single-family house lots, it's my dream that when people come in and say, "I need a building permit," my CEO is gonna hand them a rain garden brochure and say, "Put it in a rain garden. Try to soak in ten percent of your roof while you're doing it." Um, this Low-Impact Development Approaches Handbook, that was designed for West Coast. That's an Oregon, uh, manual, which, so they don't get the freeze thing that we've got going here. They don't use sand salt, they're not plowing. But it's full of really, really great creative ideas, which can be adapted for cold climates. This, that's one of my favorite ones to leave through, it's got great pictures. And then South Portland is promoting this stuff on small lots that don't require permits, but they've got an online manual that will teach you how to design a bunch of this stuff. So you can go right online and check them out if you're interested. Um, because low-impact development, it creates a lot of opportunities, because we're not talking about taking perfectly good pavement and tearing it up. But when every time pavement does get torn up, is there a chance to soak in some of this water and get some of it out of our ditches, out of our culverts, and back into the ground where it belongs? So how do we, you know, how do we make changes? Let's start with the freeze stuff first. And don't forget your buffer protection, you know, buffer. I feel like when I do these things, I consider it like, buffer, 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 because that is the cheapest, most effective way to protect your water quality, is keeping your buffers intact. Ordinance changes are free, except for your guys' time, um, which I know is, is, uh, definitely can be an arduous thing. But getting that York ordinance implemented, that's a free thing you can do. You're not costing anybody any money for them to look at it. And then give incentives for low-impact development. And, you know, is it possible for you to say, if somebody comes in and says, "I want a building permit," can you fast-track the review of that if they, if they use low-impact development? Can you, can you give them a cheaper, um, price if they decide that they're gonna go with low-impact development? Find those really, um, inexpensive ways to start promoting this stuff. You know, because more and more houses are going into that shoreline zone. This is actually a picture from the Salmon Falls River. These are all, you know, brand-new, beautiful houses. And some of them have done a pretty good job trying to keep their buffers intact. And some of them, they just cut it all down to the river and they pay a fine and off they go on their merry way. And that stuff just doesn't grow back and work, um, very well. You know, so keeping those buffers intact is one of the best things you can do, one of the cheapest things you can do to protect your water quality. Oh, there's the ordinance again. There's, yeah, I told you about my dream where my CEO is gonna hand that to somebody. And then bigger changes, you know, how do we start using this stuff to, um, redevelop our downtown areas? Um, and, and right now, there's lots of grant money out there for this stuff, but it pops up periodically. So if you can get a plan in place, you know, and then stay in touch with your Soil and Water Conservation District people and stay in touch with your Active Wayfield Watershed Lines, they've got their ear to the ground and they know when this money is available. So the EPA just had a four hundred thousand dollar grant for communities to, um, design low-impact development. So there's, you know, the stuff pops up, it happens. And then a lot of communities are looking at stormwater utilities to help pay for some of this stuff. To not only pay for, you know, some of the fancy low-impact development stuff, but to pay, you know, we've got these more intense rain events that are happening. How are we paying for the culverts that are popping out of the ground? How are we paying to fix the infrastructure that was designed to fit the two, ten, twenty-five, fifty-year storm event? But now those events are much bigger than they used to be, so our infrastructure is underdesigned. So, um, stormwater utilities, it's a way of allocating cost. It's taking money out of the, um, property taxes and allocating it based upon how much hard surfaces people have. So Los Angeles has got one, they've got three million in a stormwater utility. The smallest stormwater utility I know is thirty-three people in, in a small little town in Florida. Um, so these thirty-three people, you know, they pay based upon how much rooftop, sidewalk, driveway they've got on their property. So, and, and we're seeing these all over the United States these days. Here in Maine, Lewiston's got one, Bangor's got one, Long Creek's got one, Portland's working on one. You know, they're starting to pop up here in Maine as well. But they're not just for bigger communities, they can be for smaller communities as well. Um, so, and if, and, and I'd be happy to come back and talk about stormwater utilities ad nauseam if you're ever interested. Um, and it's really important that we start doing this now. We got this, we got this breathing room right now. For a while there, development pressure was so intense, no one could stop and think about changing rules and making it, you know, and, and changing business as usual. But that development pressure has kind of stepped back a bit. And there's a lot of good stuffs on the landscape that we need to protect. But we gotta watch out, because, you know, that's a for-sale sign kind of tucked in right there. This, you know, it's gonna happen again, and we need to be ready for the next wave. Um, this is my second-to-the-last slide, which I'd like to show you now, just because we're not built to feel growth happening, but it does. And so this is one of those slides that help us remember, once the road's in there, development happens. And, you know, we might not have big rules for the first house, because it doesn't seem to be having a big impact on the second house. But, you know, is it the third house that makes a difference? The fourth house that makes a difference? You know, and really, it's, everybody is having an impact. And we've got a lot of stuff on the landscape that's been failing for years. And we need to work to not only clean up, you know, the, the new stuff that we're putting on the ground, but also to work backwards and kind of correct some of these mistakes we've made in the past. And then lastly, don't forget, this is why we're doing it. This is my daughter Lily who wants to eat the fish, you know. She's, uh, this is, I think she's three in this picture, she's six now. But she's still just, you know, crazy about growing up in Maine, being the outdoor girl, and catching her fish. And she wants to eat them. And I only think it's fair that our kids and our grandkids have those opportunities. So we need to work on that. And psychologists say, if you show people a picture of a baby's face, they'll do whatever you want. Everybody's brainwashed, you know, and everybody do what you can to like, you know, clean up the water for these kids. Because it's, you know, it's Maine, we should be able to eat the fish in Maine. And so that's my last slide, I'll take the beautiful baby picture off. So, um, you guys, if you have questions or comments, I'm happy to take them. And I'd really appreciate it if you would fill out your evaluation form and let me know what you thought about this presentation, what could be better.
Well, we're right now in the process of coming up with a stormwater retention ordinance. But basically, we're looking at, uh, lakefront properties to start with. And then working out from there possibly over time.
Right.
And you have touched on a, a handful of these, you know, rain gardens and this and that. I'm really intrigued with the porous, uh, parking lots and the porous, uh, you know, asphalt and, or concrete.
Right, yeah.
I think that's really cool. And I never realized, until right now, I mean, I, I never noticed the one up at, at my mall. But I've driven other parts in the country where they're, on a rainy day, you're driving and the road's wet, and then all of a sudden, there's a section where it's not.
It's dry, right.
And I, I thought it was just, uh, sloped, so that ran off right away. But it's, it's porous pavement.
Right.
Which is so cool.
Yeah, the, um...
I think that's, that, I think that's a big deal. And if, if it, if it holds up in different types of climates, whether we're talking Florida where it's real hot, or Maine, way up north here where we get the freeze cold, if this thing holds up, I didn't, I don't know why they wouldn't put this almost everywhere.
Right.
If, if it can stand, withstand the impact of, you know, vehicle traffic, then I think it's a, I think it's a, a great idea.
It really is a phenomenal product, yeah. We're learning how to use it in a lot of places. For a while, they thought it could only be on flat parking lots. And you could only use it in places where trucks wouldn't be turning, because you're gonna get spall, which is a good tip. But they're finding out they can mix, sometimes they mix fibers in with the tar, so that helps hold it together a little bit better. Um, yeah, so there's, they're, they're learning how to tweak this stuff. You know, we've been putting regular asphalt on the ground for a long time, we got that down. So we're learning, you know, how to tweak the new stuff, so it really fits our climate and other places.
I didn't completely grasp the stormwater utility.
Ah, gotcha. Okay, yeah, and this is, you know, this is like another hour. So it's one of those things where I just like to throw it out there, because it's, it's kind of a difficult thing to explain. So every town, you've got, you, you deal with stormwater. So you've got your road crews that deal with your culverts, that deal with your ditches, that deal with your bridges. Um, someplace, you know, if you're a bigger town, you're actually gonna have underground pipes that deal with your stormwater. Some places, like Bedford, Saco, Portland, they're gonna have combined sewers. So they're gonna have sewage that mixed with their stormwater, and they're in the process of separating those pipes apart. So, so every community kind of deals with this stuff. And my town of Lynchfield, one of the things we're seeing is, you know, we just have culverts. Culverts and ditches is our system. But the rain events have been happening more and more to the point where our culverts are popping out of the ground every time we get a crazy rain event. And that's because our culverts are all undersized. They were designed to, to do the twenty-five-year storm event that used to happen. And now what used, what used to be the fifty-year event is now happening on a twenty-five-year event schedule. So these things are just popping out. So we need to figure out how to pay to keep that stuff in the ground, which means bigger ones. For all, it means bigger ones and also soaking water into the ground every place we can. So how do we pay for that? Right now, everybody creates their property taxes. You know, the, the guys who run the Public Works Department, they go in front of the town, they say, "This is gonna be our budget, we're gonna repay this, and we're gonna do these mini culverts, and we want this much twenty from the town," and every year, everybody votes on it. So a stormwater utility does something different. What you do is you look at the properties and you figure out how much hard area everybody has. So, and you can do it, you can average it. An average house lot is gonna have, you know, X percentage of impervious area, you divide that up. And then you look at how many parking lots are in town. You know, they're contributing a lot more stormwater than your average house lot. What about the churches that don't pay property taxes? They've got big parking lots, they've got big rooftops, they should be paying something into this as well. Do we have Air Force bases? Do we have airports? Do we have hospitals? Do we have, you know, educational facilities? So you, you figure out how much everybody's contributing to the stormwater, and then you charge them based on that. So that money comes out of the property taxes. So basically, everybody's property taxes go down, because now everybody's getting a bill to pay for the stormwater that's coming off their property. So that's how you divide it up. And that's cool, because now you're incentivizing people to stop the water coming off their property. I've got a house lot, but I can take, I can show you my rain gardens and my rain barrels, and everything's sloped to flow into my rain gardens, and I keep it on my site, and it soaks in the ground, not a drop is getting in the town ditching system. All right, you don't get a bill anymore.
Is it gonna be that easy to, to show the town that, "Hey, I'm not, you know, I'm not sending any stormwater off. Don't charge me anything." Or is it say, "Well, no, we have to have an engineer, come on, blah, blah, frickin' blah."
Well, it's one of those things, you can go out in the rain, the CEO goes out in the rain and says, you know, "I can tell this roof slopes that way and the water's going the wrong direction and it's not soaking into the ground." Or a lot of times, you can say, "Well, there's, you know, and, um, I think Bangor is a place, I can use their, they've got an average is twenty-two dollars a year that they're charging the average house lot." Um, so if you go there and you show them that you're taking a certain percentage of it out, so they'll, they'll, they'll give you a reduction. They might not take, they might not take away your whole twenty-two-dollar bill, but they will give you fifteen bucks off or whatever. Um, but then you get the bigger facilities, so they've got, uh, an Air Force base up there that used to pay nothing, that is now paying like thirty thousand dollars a year. And they're starting to tear up old, um, runways that they don't use anymore to stop that water from getting in the town's system.
They didn't pay anything in the past because there wasn't this, uh...
Because they didn't pay property taxes, yeah, yep. So it, it really, so it, not only does it make it more fair, so people own a parking lot with no building on it, they might have very low property taxes, but, um, they contribute a lot to the stormwater.
How long have they had this stormwater utility in Bangor, do you know?
They just started.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was just approved, I think, last year, and they're in the process of getting the first bill out.
All right.
Yeah, so, so Bangor's just starting. Lewiston, I think...
So then we'll get a chance to see it on the news, once the bills go out.
Oh, yeah, maybe. But Lewiston has had theirs for a while, don't, you're, okay, and see, that's just it too. Like, when you're talking to people, it's very important that their property taxes come down if they're gonna be getting a new bill, because Bangor was kind of sneaky, and they didn't do that. They kept property taxes where they were, and they sent out a new bill. Yeah, so you can tell, imagine that was kind of a hard sell. And then in Lewiston, um, and this was, I, this might, might have been like almost ten years ago at this point, you might have heard, remember, there was like this news fight that went out, it was like, "The rain tax, the rain tax." "They're gonna have rain tax in Lewiston," does that sound familiar?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. So, you know, the, the people who were putting it forward didn't, you, you've gotta really be on the wall...
You have to sell these things to the populace, yes.
And it's not simple, you know, so when, you gotta make sure you're ready to explain it to people, because otherwise, it's gonna be a rain tax, and there's gonna be pitchforks and torches and... And Portland's going through it right now, yeah. And, and so that's one of the MS four communities, so they've got combined sewers and they're required by the EPA to do extra water quality treatment. So there's, I think there's sixteen of the communities right around there. They're waiting for Portland to do it first, and then after Portland does it, then probably most of the other communities will kind of fall in and do it as well. And so it's kind of one of these things, are they all gonna try and do it together as a group? Or is each town gonna do it separately? They're not, not really sure how that's all gonna pan out, but, but it's coming, because they have huge, you know, huge water quality issues in those communities.
All ones in the Casco Bay, just about everybody that belongs there, or the ocean.
Marty, you had a slide up there that showed, um, a car sitting on grass...
Yes.
Um, in a lake region.
Yes.
And underneath was some kind of a metal or some kind of a... You, you drove, it used, you had made the point that it used to be a dirt driveway.
Yeah, I'm trying to go back to that point.
And it changed, and you were able to build something underneath it, and so that you could drive out, but it's not just simply grass, correct?
No, well, this is, so it used to be just kind of like a beaten-down piece of dirt. So what they did is they dug the dirt out, I don't know, maybe six, eight inches. And, um, I think a bunch of, half the dirt went away, and they mixed the other half with a big coarse gravel.
Okay.
And so, and so there, I've got, um, this is a really cool website. It's called One Drop at a Time, um, at like one sixty-eight Elm Avenue or something. And so it's, this house, they've done a whole bunch of different things all around that one house. So they'll show pictures of it, of it being designed, if you want to go look. So what they did is they took a cement mixer, and they just kind of, like, one of the hand-turned ones, and they mixed the soil and the gravel, and they put that all out. So it's just soil and gravel mixed together right now.
And that's where we're sitting on the right.
That's, you're seeing the cross-section there.
It doesn't have any larger stuff on the bottom?
Nope, nope.
So, so the logic there is to get more drainage, correct?
Yeah, yep.
But why the suggestion of putting grass there, when that's going to turn around and add, you know, the fertilizers?
Well, they don't fertilize it.
These particular people don't fertilize it?
Yeah, these people, they don't fertilize it. So this is, this is a, a long-rooted drought-tolerant grass, they don't fertilize it. And then they mow it, you know, so they take the clippings and do whatever they do with the clippings.
So there's not ever a concern then, when you do something like this, about the additional potential issues?
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna do that and fertilize it. You know, and, and most of the soils in Maine don't require fertilizer anyway, so, and especially not next to the lakes. So yeah, so, you know, feel free, go ahead and do that, don't...
People do.
I don't know.
I mean, I live on a lake all summer, and I'm...
I know, it's, yeah, it's crazy. But, so this is, so this is a nice alternative for people who don't wanna put in pavement, who have big, you know, big muddy spot, they've parked in their car, you know, this is kind of one of those alternatives. It just soaks into the ground.
Isn't it better for the, uh, the heat imprint or whatever? I mean...
Yeah, it's definitely...
The light is gonna, or the, the heat's gonna soak in versus if it was gravel or something in the beach, just suddenly, you know, heat may more or less bounce off.
Right, yeah. Well, yeah, the, the gra, well, the grass is absorbing all that sunlight.
Right.
Yeah, and as it does whatever little process it does, it actually makes things cooler, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, so it is gonna keep things cooler around your house also. But yeah, this water, water's not gonna run off of there into the lake, it's gonna soak into the ground.
See, the, the other one was in Belgrade where they had the, the lawn.
Yeah.
a farmer's market that had...
Yeah, the last thing, right there.
Oop, that one, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in Belgrade. So if you're, if you're driving through Belgrade, that tiny little narrow spot where you can almost touch the two lakes on either side, the new lake center is right there between the two. Um, yep, and so you can stop, and they're, and they're happy to give tours, they've got all kinds of stuff going on there.
And they have, they drive on that when they have the farmer's market?
Yep, once a week.
Very cool.
One of the things that we're struggling with this, in terms of maintenance, is including people accountable, and the CEO's time, and how do we kind of... Yeah. Good luck with that. Yeah, I mean, it really comes down to local enforcement, it really does. And it's one of those things where it's kind of hard to get that ball rolling if there hasn't been any, because everybody knows, "Well, my town's gonna force it."
What's the maintenance on something like that?
Mowing.
But, but, but removing the clippings, or...
Yeah, they, um, I'm not sure what they do with their clippings, um, so I don't know if they, if they mow and just leave them there, or if they, or if, I don't know.
Just mow without bagging them?
Yeah, yep.
But in a rain garden, the maintenance is...
Yeah, in a rain garden, it's important that the sunlight can hit the soil, so you don't want it to be totally overgrown, so you wanna prune the vegetation back and, you know, put it in your home.
Rake the leaves out of it there.
Yep. And a lot of times, if it gets a lot of water into it, um, you can kind of get, if there's a lot of fines and sand, uh, soil getting into it, it might get a little bit of a crust, so you wanna rake it up. That'll jake, yeah, twice a year. Nothing else? Can you please fill out your little forms for me?
We can pay for the nation.
No. But I won't charge you.
Thank you very much. Put it away for me.
Just to... I'll set thanks. Thank you.
You can average these out, so a bunch of ones wanna screw you up?
Yes.
Chances will be the way they talk negative.
Yeah, well, you know, it's definitely one of those things, if you see area for improvement, please let me know. And the people I saw in Dayton on Monday said, "You need handouts." And I haven't done that yet, so I'm sorry you guys do that.
Well, this is the kind of presentation...
Yeah, what about your dream handout? Like, I know, and I used to be able to get those for free, but now they charge for like a buck a pop. So go online, so if you go online, Cooperative Extension, Rain Garden, you can like find it, you can download it, you can print it out yourself.
You know, we are gonna need, once we get our, once we get our stormwater ordinance finalized, and start with public hearings and whatnot.
Mm-hmm. I would love to come back if you've got a public event and like do...
Well, and you're hired, because all the lawsuits are free.
It is for free.
Well, because this is just the kind of stuff, now, not, a lot of this probably would not be incorporated in what we're planning.
Right, yeah.
It gives people the idea of what we're talking, you know, what is a rain garden?
Yep.
What, you know, the, the walkway that went down to the water that was, uh...
Yeah, porous stairs.
Porous stairs, all right. You, you might think, you know, what these terms are, but unless you see it, you don't get it.
Right.
The, the, the pictures were just, you know, amazing for what you were trying to point out. So I think it would be a giant plus for us to, when we present our thing, is if we, at least had you come back and let you know what we were doing, and maybe you could adjust it somewhat.
Oh, yeah, yep, you could totally, yeah, it doesn't have to be an hour, we could take it down to 20 minutes, give everybody stormwater 101. Um, one of the things we did in my town, when we realized the kind of work that was going on, we wanted to protect, um, our waters also, so we had a big, we totally did a shenanigan. We had a big art contest in town, and then, so all the kids in school participated, what are the things you love about Litchfield? So we wanted to find out what everybody's rural agricultural values were, so we had them tell us. So everybody loved going to Grandma's House on the Lake, everybody loved the Litchfield Fair, everybody loved having farms in town, everybody loved the wildlife. So we had the kids give us their art, we had people submit, um, writings, photographs, and then we gave away a bunch of prizes. So when everybody showed up to get their ready certificate for their prize, we made them sit through this first. So it was a really, 'cause, yeah, so all the kids dragged their parents in, and then we also, at the town meeting, we've, uh, the guy who moderates our town meeting is a smoker, so he's gotta go take a smoke break in the middle. So we had 30 minutes in the middle where we did one of these for the whole town, too.
The same one, or similar?
Similar, you know, I, I use, yeah, every, every time I do it, it's different, but every time it's kind of the same thing, yeah. Yeah, you guys got like, you know, the data, the graphs, and all that kind of stuff.
Personally, I really enjoyed it, I thought it was, yeah, and your enthusiasm is just astounding.
Thanks, yep.
I mean, that's, that's a, that's a big part of, of presenting just something like this, to maybe a crowd, not necessarily us, but another crowd, maybe that is not enamored of the concept.
Right, right.
I don't know.
Well, it's, you know, it's just so beautiful, and it can be cheaper, and it cleans the, like, what's not to love?
Right.
You know, yeah.
Well, it's new and it's changed, so way away, that, those are, you know...
Yep.
That Tom Cashel wasn't anybody convinced of? Yeah, that's the best presentation.
You haven't seen...
What?
I've seen everything.
Not this one? No.
I guess it puts me in the...
I've seen it five times. Five times?
Well, I saw it twice in Quayville, and then at least once from Melna, and once or twice here upstairs.
No, oh, yeah, yeah, and I think it's...
I'm back, I saw.
Yeah.
I saw.
Yay. Well, like, that's the best audience ever, you know?
Smaller, smaller.
Is it?
I'm not a member anymore. I might go anyway, Maine, um, that's maybe a good nursery association.
Yeah, we helped design a sustainable landscage program.
Did you talk to them? You got a hot date? I'll read the questions, I just start going like in high school, did, 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 did.
Big B, big B.